We do have a quorum, so I'm going to call the meeting to order.
Recording in progress.
And we'll start with salute to the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and roll call please when you're ready.
Commissioner Scabdal?
Here.
Commissioner Levy is absent. Commissioner Mulder?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner West is absent. Commissioner Curiazzie?
Here.
Commissioner McFarland is absent.
Director Ford, do we have any agenda modifications this evening?
Yes, Chair, we do. So given the length and size of the agenda, the first thing I would like to request of the commission and particularly the Chair is we had put a workshop on the end of the agenda for the Regional Climate Action Plan. Given the length of this agenda tonight and the number of people who are going to want to speak on various items, I don't think we're going to get there. And I would just, I think it would be fair to everybody to continue that early in the meeting so everybody knows we're just not going to get there.
Okay. So do we need to take an action to continue that item to a date uncertain?
To, actually to October 2nd.
Commissioners, if I could have a motion to continue Item 6 under public hearings Humboldt Regional Climate Action Plan to October 2nd?
Yes.
So moved.
Have a motion from Commissioner Mulder and a second from Commissioner O'Neil. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
And then we've also received a request from the applicant that we were in agreement with for Item G4, request a continuance, is it October 3rd or 2nd?
G4, that'd be the LCI parcel map subdivision?
Yes.
Continued to when?
It is the 2nd.
To October 2nd.
Shall we take that up when we come to it, or you want us to do that now?
You can take that up when we come to it, but if there's anybody here that would like to speak to that, it would probably be good to get it out of the way so that they don't have to sit and wait for it.
Okay, well then we'll take it up right now. Motion to, do I have to have a public comment on the continuance?
Yes.
Okay. So it's proposed that we're going to continue the LCI parcel map subdivision to the October 2nd meeting. Is there anybody in the room or on Zoom that would like to comment on that continuance, or if you can't be at the October 2nd meeting would like to comment to the Planning Commission this evening on that item? I see nobody in the room wishing to comment, and I don't see any hand raised on Zoom. So a call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to move LCI partial map subdivision to October 2nd meeting.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask if we needed to take public comment on the continuance of the RCAP workshop, which we did not?
Aye. That's a good question.
Probably should have asked if anybody wants to speak to that continuance. It's technically not a public hearing, but I would not want to...
That was, but the only thing that I was curious about, that's continuing a continuance.
True. And we already had a public hearing that we opened and closed, which is why I didn't take comment.
Well, it's not a public hearing, it's a workshop.
It's a workshop?
Yeah.
That I wasn't intending to take public comment even during the workshop because we already took public comment in the workshop.
Correct.
Which is why I didn't take public comment on the continuance.
Thank you for clarifying, Chair. You're on point.
All right, thank you. At this time, if that's it on agenda modifications, Director Ford?
Yes, with the exception that there are quite a number of supplementals. I'm not going to go through them all because there's quite a stack on most items on the agenda. They're available on the dais for your review, and they're available to the public on the counter next to the lectern. I'm sorry, one other item, Chair, is that we're going to request that Item C2 be removed from the consent calendar.
Wait, E2?
C. It's a consent calendar item? It is E2, I'm sorry.
E2.
It's Heavenly Rooted Estates, so that's going to come off the consent calendar.
Is it going to be contin, oh, it's just coming off of consent?
Just coming off consent for discussion.
Okay.
And we can do that when you get to the consent calendar.
Yes, okay. All right. So with that, we're through agenda modifications. At this time, we take public comment on non-agenda items. So if anybody would like to address the commission this evening on something that is not on the agenda, but is under the commission's purview, you're welcome to approach the podium. And if you're online, raise your hand by pressing star nine. So would anybody like to address the commission on something that's not on the agenda this evening? And I don't see anybody approaching, and I don't see any hand raised, so I'm going to close public comment on non-agenda items. So we're going to move to the consent agenda. These are items that are generally routine in nature and usually approved by a single vote, as taken up as the entire consent calendar. I'll go through each item that's on consent calendar. I will check with commissioners, the audience, and anybody online to see if there's a matter that you would like us to pull from consent, to have a public hearing on, answer a question or clarify anything about that item. Just indicate if you're in the audience by raising your hand. If you're on Zoom, by pressing star nine to raise your hand. First item on consent is Humboldt Flavor LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Use Permit, Special Permit. Commissioners? I don't see anybody, anybody in the room?
And Chair, this is a continuance.
Oh, excuse me, it is a continuance. So probably not going to be many comments on it. Thank you. And I don't see any hands raised online. The second item is Heavenly Rooted Estates, which we are going to pull off of consent. So that's coming off. Item 3, Barnum Timber and Abidie General Plan Amendment, Zone Reclassification and Lot Line Adjustment. Commissioners, all good? I don't see any hands in the room. I see no hands online, so...
I think the hand raised is for the previous item, for Heavenly Rooted Estates.
Ah. I can't see...
Do you want to allow them to speak for a moment?
Yeah, for some reason I'm not seeing the attendees. I do see one hand raised. Okay, got it. It's Eric Weems. Did you have a comment or question about Heavenly Rooted Estates, in which case we will be hearing that after, at the end of the meeting for Item...
Yeah, I was just, I was curious of what coming off consent meant.
Ah, it means that we will take it up later on the agenda, and we will have a staff report and public comment before we take any action.
Would also allow the applicant to present any thoughts and ideas that they have?
Yeah, the applicant will have an opportunity to speak on the project as well. Okay, so we'll be bringing that up later in the agenda. So I think we covered Barnum Timber. Item 4, Oryc Community Service District, Extension and Modification of their CDP. I see no hands raised on that one. Item 5, Southern Trinity Joint Unified School District, General Plan Conformist Review. Looks like that stays on consent. Item 6, Draft Request for Reasonable Accommodation for Residential Accessibility Ordinance, Updating Some Zoning Ordinance to Match State and Federal Codes. And that stays on consent. So looks like we only pulled Item 2. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Items 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6 on the consent.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Go by voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained, hearing done. So consent calendar, we're through. Item 2, Heavenly Record Estates, would that scheduled on the agenda after all these other items? So we'd be taking that up as Item H, Item Pulled From Consent, near the end of the So any of you that are here for that item, just know that that's probably going to be closer to 8:30, between 8 and 8:30. So now we're going to take up old business. We have a couple of items on old business. For each of these items, we will have a staff report. Then I will ask the commissioners if they have any questions of staff related to the staff report. Then we will open a public hearing, which time the applicant can make a presentation, and we're going to hold those to 10 minutes. And then anybody else that wants to speak on that matter can also address the commission. We'll allow you three minutes. We do have a lot of things on the agenda tonight. I am going to be strict on those timelines. If you want to speak, please do. If somebody's already made the comments that you were going to say, feel free to speak and acknowledge that you agree with that previous commenter, but you don't have to repeat everything. If you wrote a letter to us or made comments in writing or online, thank you. We're very good about reading all of those. We do our homework up here, so they have been read. If you want to speak to acknowledge that you made those comments and summarize them, feel free to. You don't need to read us the whole comment again, we've read it. So if we can kind of adhere to those, I think we can move along a little bit more quickly. We do have a lot of items, and a lot of people want to speak on a lot of different topics this evening. So with that, we'll start on the U-Haul Building signage, Conditional Use Permit Modification.
Hello, my name is Alice Vastling, and I am the assigned planner for the U-Haul Building signage project. This project was originally heard at the meeting of August 7th, and the Planning Commission asked for wider noticing of the project. A press release was issued to the McKinleyville Chamber of Commerce, Humboldt Alert's Facebook page, Red-Headed Black Belt, which was shared on the Lost Coast outpost, and the Humboldt County Planning Department's website. Staff have received two voicemails and 14 emails and letters. Both voicemails and nine emails were in support of the project or business. Four emails were generally opposed due to visual concerns, type of business, and false advertising, and one was an informational request clarifying that tree removal was not part of the project. I also like to apologize in advance for some of the attachment numbers being incorrectly identified in the most recent staff report. Attachment 4 is the evidence of similarly signed U-Haul buildings in California. Attachment 6 is the master sign plan for the Mill Creek Marketplace Shopping Center, and Attachment 7 is the referral agency comments and recommendations. This project is located in McKinleyville off Central Avenue in the Mill Creek Marketplace Shopping Center. The U-Haul South building was formerly Kmart. The property was purchased in 2021 by a U-Haul affiliate and is a 100,000-square-foot building on a 7.72-acre parcel. The U-Haul North building was formerly Ray's Market, and the property was purchased in 2022 by a U-Haul affiliate. The building is approximately 45,000 square feet and is on a 5.32-acre parcel. The original master sign plan for the Mill Creek Marketplace Shopping Center was approved in 1992. In the master sign plan, the major anchor tenants, which both of these buildings are identified as, are allowed signs that the company uses from time to time in California, and we have included pictures of similar signage used by U-Haul in California as Attachment 4 in the staff report. The signage must be architecturally compatible and approved by the landlord, and in this case, U-Haul is the landlord. And lastly, they must be approved by the authorizing governmental agency, and this is why a modification to the original conditional use permit is necessary. Under Humboldt County Sign Ordinance, wall signs over 100 square feet per facade regardless of building size requires discretionary review and a conditional use permit. There is a breakdown of the signs proposed in Attachment 1C of the staff report, which shows the U-Haul South Building East facade is proposing 2,366 square feet of infrastructure identified as signs under the ordinance. The U-Haul North Building East facade is proposing 425 square feet, and the U-Haul North Building North facade is proposing 100, or sorry, 501 square feet. In total, there are 22 new signs proposed on the two U-Haul buildings. 12 on the U-Haul South building, four on the U-Haul North Building East facade, and six on the U-Haul North Building's North facade. And as a note, the other smaller business locations within the Mill Creek Marketplace Shopping Center that are identified within the original master sign plan as shops or pads are also, are allowed to place their logo within a three-foot sign band within 90% of the tenant's storefront. Some of the businesses have multiple storefronts and are able to place their logo on multiple sides. Due to the storefront sizes of the existing business buildings, all of the businesses within the shopping center would require a conditional use permit should they wish to increase their signage. The U-Haul South building, the former Kmart building, has 12 proposed signs along the approximately 450-foot-long building facade. Five signs totaling 170 square feet are directional in nature, indicating where to load and unload and clearance information. There is one 10-foot-by-46-foot rigid panel that says "Drive-In Storage" on it, and one 10-foot-by-57-and-a-half-foot rigid panel that says your storage place and contains the U-Haul signature waves. These two signs will be placed two to three feet higher than the roof line at the installation location. However, this is significantly less than the highest point of the overall roof, which is allowable under Humboldt County Sign Ordinance. On the further south portion of the building facade, there is one 12-and-a-half-foot-by-76-foot rigid panel that contains two aluminum window displays representing the storage facility doors and indicating the units are climate-controlled, and three 8-foot-by-8-foot metal roll-up door images. And there is one 4-and-a-half-foot-by-4-and-a-half-foot cross-foe window placed above the existing U-Haul logo sign at the main entrance proposed. In response to staff's concerns with visual impacts, the applicant removed from the proposal two large balcony signs, as you can see circled here. The U-Haul North building, former Ray's Market, has four new signs proposed along the east side approximately 250-foot facade. One sign is a five-square-foot nameplate sign with the address. There are two 8-foot-by-25-foot aluminum window displays representing the storage facility's doors and indicating the units are climate-controlled, and one 4-and-a-half-foot-by-4-and-a-half-foot cross-foe window proposed. On the north side, there are six signs proposed on the approximately 175-foot facade. Proposed is one 5-foot-by-9-foot black backlit illuminated U-Haul logo sign, one 8-foot-by-25-foot aluminum window display representing the storage facility's doors and indicating the units are climate-controlled, and four 8-foot-by-8-foot metal storage roll-up door images. As the U-Haul North, north side is the closest to a public right-of-way, we have included a street view picture from School Road to show the elevation and vegetation. Vegetation removal is not proposed as part of this project. Staff is recommending approval of this project since the project conforms to the original master sign plan that was adopted when the shopping center was approved and meets the findings that the project is approvable with a conditional use permit under Humboldt County Sign Ordinance. Both the U-Haul South and U-Haul North buildings are exceptionally large in size with long facades and on large parcels, and the distance from public rights-of-way are significant. The U-Haul South building is 500 feet from Central Avenue, although not visible due to elevation and other businesses, and is 550 feet from School Road at an angle. The U-Haul North building is 500 feet from Central Avenue and obscured by vegetation and other businesses. The exception is the north facade, which is 60 feet. However, this facade is at least partially obscured by existing vegetation. In conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission make all the required findings for approval and approve the Conditional Use Permit Modification subject to the recommended conditions of approval. By approval of the Conditional Use Permit, the commission must find the project would be consistent with the general plan, zoning requirements, and not be detrimental to the public welfare. If the Planning Commission does not believe the findings could be made, they could choose to revise or reduce the number of proposed signs or deny the project. We are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Curiazzie?
Just reiterating or confirming that their, their application is removing two components of their original application on the south portion.
Yes, that's correct.
Also confirming the tree removal, you said there's no tree removal. One of the graphics shows before with trees and after without trees. I assume that's just to help illustrate the signage, and those trees are not proposed to be removed?
That is correct.
Thanks, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner O'Neil?
It's more of a statement than a comment, but some people who responded to some of the notices were confused, I think, as to what the item was about. You know, this is about signage. It wasn't about whether we wanted U-Haul or not wanted U-Haul, and no one's losing their job, or, you know, we're not closing down the business. This was about whether or not U-Haul needed to comply with the existing ordinance for signage that was just recently passed, or whether they could get a variance and do increased signage over what the ordinance allowed. And that was what the issue was and why we took additional public comment. Is that correct, John? Did I get that right?
That's absolutely correct. This is not a use issue. It's strictly about the signage. But to be clear, the ordinance allows signage to be beyond what the ordinance anticipated through this process.
That is correct.
Yeah. Commissioner Curiazzie?
Just a follow-up. Do you have a number of total square footage for that south section with those portions removed? Because...
It is the 2,366. That includes, it was after the removal.
No other questions of staff. At this time, we'll open a public hearing. If the applicant wishes to address the commission, now would be the time. It's not required, but you're welcome to, and you have up to 10 minutes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dale Huber. I'm the general manager of the McKinleyville U-Haul location. I've been working with U-Haul for 23 years, and I'm here today to provide more clarity on the need for directional and informational signage so that customers know which buildings to go to, both from Central Avenue and School Avenue. Our customers are both McKinleyville neighbors as well as tri-city locals. Cal Poly students, folks moving to Humboldt, or travelers just passing through, completely unfamiliar with the area. Because each location is unique, our signage intends to reflect the information. When serving the public on multiple buildings, properties that provide physical merchandise as well as both stationary and mobile rentable space, extensive visual guides are needed. Even our colorful graphics are intended to present a positive visual message. We are your neighbors and contribute to the community in many grassroots ways, whether by hosting a distribution center for Girl Scouts, sponsoring local sports, the community events, the BMX track, and much more. All we're asking is to have the ability to provide our customers with the easiest way to understand and the most seamless customer experience that we are able to provide, and we believe the signage will play that vital role in accomplishing that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner O'Neil? Yes? Excuse me, one of the commissioners had a question for you.
I was just wondering, if you had to stay within the ordinance, how would that impact your signage?
Well, our customers wouldn't know where to go.
No, I mean, how would it impact your signage? Would you just have to make it smaller? Would you have to remove signs?
That, I don't know. We're just at the mercy of you guys.
So you didn't attend?
I think that question could go to staff.
Sure. So right now, what is currently on those buildings is the maximum that would be allowed without a use permit. So there would be no additional signage.
Yes, Commissioner Mulder?
So through the chair to the applicant. So I just want to clarify, in the testimony, at the beginning of your testimony, I was hearing, it sounded like for you, you feel for your business to operate function, to function, you need these signs so that way customers can differentiate between which buildings to go to or not go to. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else wish to address the commission on the U-Haul signage? Checking online, Director Ford, do we, I don't see any hands online. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the commissioners. Any discussion necessary on this? Yes, Commissioner Mulder?
So for me, I feel that we went through a long process with the ordinance adoption and left this option available for people to come forward, and I feel like they're going through the proper process. And personally, with the economy the way it is in Humboldt County, I have a hard time trying to say no to a business that's wanting to invest money. I mean, they're going to, obviously, it's going to take labor materials and a capital investment, which means that they're probably going to stay open for a little bit of time, which could provide more jobs. So I, I don't want to say no to business. That, that's kind of where I'm coming from, and I didn't hear any public testimony or read any public testimony that, that it's going to be detrimental to health. You know, I don't want it to say, oh, business, everything's business, but I didn't read anything or hear anything, so I'd be in support of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Curiazzie?
Yeah, I appreciate Commissioner O'Neil continuing this and allowing the additional time to think this through. I think I've settled on the request being a bit excessive. I kind of went through and tried to think about what the intent was of 100 square feet per facade, and I think, you know, was imagining the sort of standard small standalone business, which I've kind of estimated is in the 3,000 to 4,000-square-foot area, which I was taking a stab at what the square footage of a facade would look like. And I'm guessing that a facade square footage, assuming a 10-foot-height building, they can often be taller than that, was 630 square feet for a face, so 100 square feet is about 16% of that. And... And I agree that these are very large buildings and I was considering extending that sort of approach to this applicant. And for the south side, that would propose, you know, either proposing a, limiting to 16% of their facade square footage or actually proposing a square foot limit of, I think it was 1,500 square feet for signage. So that's one thought. I think it's a balance between putting forth a sign ordinance that we worked hard on and allowing for this conditional use process and allowing for the applicant to expand their signage. And my other thought was on the north facade, on the north building, limiting to 100 square feet on that, because that is a much more public-facing facade that I think is much more visible. And limiting to 100 square feet and perhaps, you know, inviting the applicant to do something more artistic if that was of interest to them. So that's kind of where I've settled.
Commissioner O'Neill?
I did read most of the social media posts and the majority of them were against more signage. We do have some comments that were submitted from employees or individuals that had received donations and no one was attempting to shut down the business. I just feel like that there could have been an attempt to stay within the ordinance and the big giant signs with the doors on them aren't necessary. They could do that in a, a map or online to show people what they provide there. They don't need to have pictures of the orange doors. I, I understand having signage that directs people from one place to another, but that's a little excessive. And I would have liked to seen an attempt to modify the signs to provide the directions that they need to provide to the public and stay within the ordinance. And then if that wasn't possible, to come back and say, well, you know, this isn't just gonna work. But instead, it's like, well, this is what we do everywhere else, so we want to do it in McKinneyville. I'm not opposed to the business being there. I, I used to park there every day and I, it's a major improvement over the homeless camp that used to be there. And I'm not proposing that we shut down the business, but I, I feel like turning it into a, something that, from a different area and putting it, plopping it into McKinneyville, you know, without making an attempt to try to stay within the ordinance is excessive.
Thank you. I appreciate that staff did reach out to the public through all the different media outlets and, and that we directed the public to actually comment to the planning commission, to submit their comments to staff and to this commission. I don't think anonymous social media responses are, are considered a response to the commission, so I, I, I wouldn't consider those. I think that the, the signage is allowable under the original master sign plan that was approved for the shopping center. Our ordinance specifies that shopping centers shall have master sign plans, that the ordinance isn't a one-size-fit-all for every establishment and these retail complement, retail shopping centers. That's why they have a master sign plan for the shopping center. I like the fact that U-Haul has reduced the signage a bit and provided a better perspective this time in the renderings to actually show a perspective from the street and the distance from the street to the building, whereas last time, I think the renderings were just right at the face of the building. So for me, the perspective provides a better view and image of the signs that we're gonna, that people would see driving by on Central Avenue, and they didn't appear to be over the top to me. And then finally, the comments that were submitting, submitted to the commission, I thought were supportive, by and large, of the signage as shown as, and as was stated in the staff report, so I'm prepared to support this and I haven't heard of, so that's where I stand.
So I'm gonna try it this way and I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution, attachment one, which says the following, finds the planning commission as considered the sequoia categorical exemption 15311A, accessory structures including on-premises signs and finds the proposed project complies with general plan and zoning ordinance and approves the conditional use permit modification subject to the recommended conditions of approval. With my motion, I am acknowledging that they're down, they did downsides from their original application and then also they did provide better perspectives of what that, what it would look like. That's my reason for support of that.
Have a motion. Go second. I'll second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Scabdal?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuriazi?
No.
Commissioner O'Neill?
No.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Hello?
So Chair, you have a couple options here.
Yes.
You can continue to try to formulate motions that may pass tonight, recognizing that you've got four people here, even number, you can end up with a, a 2-2 in perpetuity. Or you can continue it until more members of the commissioner here, presumably to have an odd number of commissioners able to vote.
Okay.
Does that mean that there's no interest in entertaining a sort of something that isn't 100 square feet per facade, but does, you know?
Yeah, I, I would be interested in hearing what people have to say. But, you know, I'm stuck on the, on the the interpretation of the sign ordinance as limiting shopping center developments and, and retail establishments to 100 feet per facade. That's not what it says. And that's what this process is all about, is to have people be able to come here with signage plans that are, that, that are suitable to their facility that, you know, are, are not necessarily 100, 100 feet per facade. I just can't imagine, you know, a building of any scale having a one 10 by 10-foot sign on it. That's not what we intended with the sign ordinance. And if, if that's where we think we're going with that, then I think we need to bring a sign ordinance back. But if you, if you have a proposal, but I'm, I'm just telling you, I'm not going to support it. If you come, if you say you have a proposal to limit U-Haul to 100 feet, 100, 100 square feet per, per facade, we're gonna be deadlocked at 2-2 at least.
Yeah, no, I can repeat what my proposal was.
Okay.
So my proposal was to, to constrain the south building to 16% of the square footage of that east-facing facade. That results in about 1,500 square feet. And that, to me, was staying within the intent of where the 100-square-foot value came from. And the, and then my second part to that proposal was on the north-facing side of the north building, saying no to that piece and constraining that facade to 100 square feet. That's the face, that's, that's the part that's facing School Road. And that would be one where they're proposing to have large orange garage doors, you know, out on, facing public property versus out into the parking lot. And just contrib, basically, I would imagine they would just put a 10 by 10 U-Haul sign, so you know that that's a U-Haul building. They don't necessarily need to see three large orange garage doors on that side. And then the east-facing facade of the north building, as they propose.
It might be helpful if you put the renderings back up so we can actually visualize what, what Commissioner Kuriazi is talking about. And I'm still not following how, how you got to 16%, I guess. It just seems like an arbitrary number to me.
It is. I don't think it's necessarily much more arbitrary than 100 square feet. So the...
I agree with that.
What I, how I came about it was an average, kind of imagining the Mountain Mikes in that same shopping center and guessing that that Mountain Mikes is in the 3,000 to 4,000 square foot area, square footage. So I guessed how long each side of that building is and then assumed 10 feet height. So that results in one side of that building being 630 square feet. And so 100 square feet of that 630 square feet is 16%. And I agree, it's arbitrary, but I think it stays within the intent of the images that were presented to us during workshopping and, and hearing the sign ordinance.
Yeah, I just have a little bit of concern about trying to precedent, being precedent setting of now we're going with 16% as, I just, that's, that's a concern, so. Commissioner Mulder?
So just clarification, now that the rendering's up, can you elaborate on what you're saying here? So the, this south side, you want, you want all those signs gone or I'm trying to?
So, so they're proposing 2,300 square feet, so that's with those two parts removed. So it'd be reducing the remaining to 1,500 square feet.
So, this, this part right here, I believe it was 500 feet from the public right-of-way?
Yeah, go to the next slide.
So if someone has a commercial building 500 feet off the public right-of-way, owns all that parking lot, we're saying that they can't have that signage to try to draw in business?
Well, we're, so I think, what I heard from the applicant is the primary goal for this is to help direct people to know where they're going. Note also that there is a shopping center sign on, on Central Avenue as well. And so my understanding here is they've entered the property and they're trying to decide where to go.
Yeah, I, I, I can't support trying to, if they took down those two signs, I, I, I don't feel like... Yeah, I just, I can't support it saying no to, you know, we, we developed an ordinance. I feel that they're needing those. I don't know. I, I can't support it, so we'll be deadlocked at 2-2. Maybe. There might be 3-1. I don't know.
Commissioner O'Neill? Any suggestions for move?
In addition to, you know, the signage, I think the drive-in storage and the other one to the left of it are too big. I would shrink those down. And I don't think we need all the orange doors all over. The parking lot is full of U-Haul vehicles also, so there's no missing that this is a U-Haul facility. Once you get in the facility and you need to say, well, this is where you, you know, directional signs, they don't need to be that huge for people to be able to read them. And we had this discussion when we did the sign ordinance about how people use online, you know, websites to figure things out. There could be maps on, you know, information on there. It doesn't have to be plastered all over the building. I mean, they're not even attractive-looking signs as far as I'm concerned, but... So if we're not going to be able to come to an agreement tonight, then I think we need to wait until there's additional members to vote on it, which would put us, maybe not until October.
I just don't understand, maybe Director Ford, what has precedent? The master sign plan for the shopping center or the Humboldt County sign ordinance?
Well, they all work together. So obviously, shopping centers want to see a master sign plan. And then really, it is left in the discretion of the planning commission to determine what an appropriate design, what an appropriate amount of signage is. And it has been articulated, the ordinance clearly allows an applicant to exceed what would normally be seen on a, a building. So this is the process that the commission intentionally developed. And so really, the, the nature of the discussion is, you know, what's too much and are they appropriately designed?
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Mulder?
So through the chair to staff, those orange doors, if those were actual roll-up doors, would those be considered a sign, bright orange?
If they were actual roll-up functioning doors, no.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna propose that we continue this. I don't want to, but I, I, we have a lot of other items on the agenda tonight and I don't think we're gonna get through this one, so.
So before you completely go there, let me come in from the outside and kind of ask a question. Is there anything that would be different than what the applicant's proposing that you'd be willing to consider? And then for those that think this is entirely too much, are there things that may be a little different than what Commissioner Kuriazi is proposing that, that could be acceptable? I, I mean, it's easy to continue it. That's the easiest action. But if you, the four of you could come to a consensus on something that maybe is a little different than what's here, that would allow the commission to take action on it tonight? You, you know that.
Yeah, but we can take action on something, but if it's not acceptable to the applicant or it's not something that they're in agreement to, then what's the process? Let's just say we come to some consensus on some sign reduction and the applicant's not happy with that, then what, then they have to appeal to the board supervisors?
It would be an appeal to the board, yes. So I, I understand. It, it may make sense to try to get all seven commissioners here and, and have a robust discussion with the full commission.
Yes, Commissioner Mulder?
So I just, the, I just want to be careful of the message we're sending. The message I'm kind of hearing, and it's, it's split here, is no to business, no like, and then also yes to business. And that's, I'm not trying to, I'm just telling you where I'm seeing it from. We heard testimony from an applicant saying that's what they need to run their business. I don't feel it's our, appropriate for us to be like, no, you can't run your business that way. That's what you need. I feel that people are looking in and watching what Humboldt County's doing and if we continue to say no, 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 I mean, you could go all the way back to the Wind Project that never happened. You know, that we've sent a strong message as no. That's my personal opinion. And I don't want to continue to send that message because I see what happens to the community when we say no to business like that. If we had a lot of testimony that was provided to us, written or emailed or anything like that, I would be looking at it different, but I don't feel that we were presented with testimony to change our opinion. If even that one along School Road, it's 60 feet from the public right-of-way. It's not right up in the right-of-way. And then thinking also that they're possibly, they're orange doors, I mean, if they're functioning doors, it wouldn't matter if it was orange. So I, that, that's kind of, if it, you know... So I'm, I'm trying to say, this is what some, a business person is saying that they need for their business to operate. They have a large tract of land. I think it was 12 acres, maybe 13 acres altogether. It's not right in the middle of a neighborhood where, you know, they have to look at that every single day. I, I don't know. I, I just want to be very, very cautious. And then also think, like, with the sign ordinance we did, so it's a public hearing here, I think it's about $2,500 in the ballpark. They don't like what we say, then it's... They don't like what we say, then it's, I think about that's 1,500 bucks to appeal to the board. So just want to think about what our decisions mean to the bigger community.
Yeah, yes.
We are the planning commission, so if we just rubber stamp everything, then we don't need to be here. And I don't think we have been anti-business. I can hardly think of anything that we've ever turned down here at this board. We bend over backwards for businesses. We eliminate things. We do a lot. But what I haven't seen is an attempt to stay within the ordinance and what that might look like. I don't think it had to look like what it is right now. You can change signs, modify them. You don't have to have signs that exceed the building to tell people that this is where you need to go. They can stay within, you know, the face of the building. I don't think we need to paint doors on the side of the building to show that there's doors inside the building. You know, directional signs, you know, enter here, that's fine. They can stay within the face of the building and they don't have to exceed the height of the building, even though the top of the building is officially, I guess, the point. I just don't see an attempt to try to stay within the ordinance. And yes, the ordinance allows you to come here. And if we want to send the signal to everybody who wants to, you know, exceed the ordinance, just come here because we're just going to prove it. We don't have to prove it if we don't agree with it. And I would like to see something more modest. It doesn't have to be the signs that were there right now. It could be, you know, an improvement. I mean, I could see the U-Haul sign being bigger, a U-Haul sign on the side. I don't think you need big orange doors on School Road to know that you're at, you know, U-Haul. It lacks originality as far as I'm concerned in terms of staying within the ordinance. And if, I don't want to continue this all night long because we do have other things we need to talk about. There are other members of the board that may have pro or con positions on this matter. And we can either wait for that or we can ask them to come back with a proposal that's more in line with what the ordinance would allow.
Okay, thank you. I'll express my frustration. This was on the consent calendar the first time it came to us. We pulled it off consent to give the community time to provide us input. We reached out and staff did a great job, went out into the community. Not one person from the town of McKinleyville spoke in support or opposition tonight, even after all of that effort. And we're sitting up here telling the applicant that we're going to modify their signage plan. I don't think that's fair to them. I understand. You got to say what you wanted to say. I get to say what I want to say. Please respect me on that.
I will.
Okay? So, and we've heard over and over, they complied with the marketplace sign plan. So I don't think we can sit up here and modify their signage plan for them. I think they heard us. They understand where the commissioners stand. We can continue this to another meeting when there's more commissioners. The applicant can consider the comments they heard and consider other options as well, so.
Recommend that you continue it to October 2nd, 2025.
Okay. Have a motion?
Basically, what I'm hearing is a difference in interpretation of the sign ordinance. And I respect you and I respect everyone in the process, different interpretations. So I'm quite honestly, to be honest with you, I'm frustrated that I didn't go spend the evening with my wife tonight and why I came here. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to continue this meeting to October 2nd.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to continue U-Haul signage plan to our October 2nd meeting. Can we have just, I think we can do a voice vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just for clarification, everyone who wants to participate has to watch this fun little exchange.
Well, sometimes we have to agree to disagree. It's okay. And I appreciate all the commissioners coming in here this evening. Appreciate that, too. So let's move on to item 2, Santos subdivision extension. Report from staff, please.
Okay, thank you. So Cliff Johnson with the Humboldt County Planning and Building Department. This is a two-year extension to a final map subdivision for 45 residential lots. And this was heard at the August 7th meeting, I think, or was it the 7th? Well, the last meeting, 21st.
21st, yes.
And there were some questions from the commission about the opportunity to potentially add bike lanes and to add conditions. And so one of the things that we did find after consulting with counsel is that the commission and the government is actually prohibited from adding conditions to map extensions unless those conditions are related to the time of the extension. And so if it was the desire of the commission to make modifications to it or add some conditions to do something like adding bike lanes that might affect some of those lots, the recommendation would be from us to actually deny the extension so that they would potentially reapply, which would reopen that opportunity. We, staff does believe that the findings for the extension can be made. The development has not changed from what was approved. And we believe that the findings can still be made from when it was approved. When this was originally approved, the McKinleyville Community Plan and the Humboldt County Regional Bike Plan both showed potentially Class II bike lanes occurring in this area. And that can still occur within the existing right of way that is proposed on the map. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's our brief presentation here.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Staff? Commissioner Kiriyazi, please.
Thank you. You had said in terms of the alternative, you'd use the phrase, a map extension. Is that, is there a difference between extending the map itself versus extending the permit application? Or are they all just one thing?
They're one thing. So basically, you know, this was an approved subdivision by the planning commission. And so it's approved for a certain time period. Usually, that's two years. And once they do get a certain number of extensions, this, I believe, would be the final extension granted to them. And so it's just allowing that map to continue to be valid so that they could potentially complete the improvements and improvement plans that they need to do so that they can actually file the map and create the lots.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kiriyazi, I did watch, by the way, I did watch this discussion from the last meeting. So I am familiar with the project and the discussion. So your questions have been answered. We're prepared to make a motion.
Public comment and then discussion?
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. Yeah, I'll open public comment. If anybody from the applicant wishes to address the commission on this matter? Please approach the podium or raise your hand if you're online. Apparently, I don't see the applicant who's not in the room. Is anybody else here that wishes to address the commission? Do you have a hand up? Oh, sorry, I can't see those very well on here. I see one hand up online. Please press star six to unmute and... Is Jacob Schillinger?
Hello, I'm Jacob. I'm the agent for the project. I'm just saying, want to state that the plan was actually always to have bike lanes on McKinleyville Avenue as it extends to the project. I was looking back at the tentative map, you know, the cross-section was probably more geometric in nature. But the intention is to have six-foot bike lanes on the extension there. Between the right of way and the public utilities, that takes up about a 76-foot swath down there. So there's not really much room to expand the roadway and all that without negatively impacting or potentially reducing the number of lots. But yeah, the plan was always to have bike lanes. And I know this came up, and I was out of town, this came up at the last meeting. But I just wanted to clarify that and just make sure this moves forward. And just make sure, you know, everyone is clear if they have any questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to address the commission on this topic? I don't see any, so we will close the public hearing and now bring it back to the commission.
Thank you. Yeah, so I appreciate staff looking into this. Also, thank you to the agent of the applicant for making that comment. That was very helpful. So thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. The, it is very encouraging to hear that the plan is to have a bike lane along McKinleyville Avenue. I am not at all interested in having the applicant reopen this. That's not of interest at all. I also do appreciate the staff looking at the 2018 bike plan that HCOG did put together. You're correct, it does show Class II bike lanes for that stretch of McKinleyville. I think my comments at this point would be to staff. I think just reflecting back to the housing projects that were approved along Washington and then also the BMX Park, kind of essentially removing the ability for the McKinleyville Community Plan to actually realize a bike trail as it shows in the community plan to continue from where it currently is planned to dead end in Washington all the way down to School Road. I do think having a bike trail, a separated trail along the stretch of McKinleyville Avenue could potentially reopen that ability to open, to continue that trail to School Road. But I think this potentially closes that option as well. So just a request to staff to note that if that part of the McKinleyville Community Plan is intended to be carried forward, that will be now on the county's shoulders to try to find funding to actually make that realization happen. And then I also want to point staff to the current draft level of traffic stress study that HCOG is currently conducting. And you'll see that the stretches of McKinleyville Avenue that currently have Class II bike lanes are labeled as a level of traffic stress of three, which what that means is really only a small percentage of adults are willing to tolerate those conditions and bike on those conditions. So it's not really a bike lane that's going to be of interest of use by a majority of residents of McKinleyville. But with that said, I am not here to oppose continuing a housing development.
Thank you. Any other comments? If you'd like to make a motion?
Yep, thank you. I will move to adopt, to accept staff's recommendations for the Santos subdivision extension.
I have a motion from Commissioner Kiriyazi, second from Commissioner Mulder. Can we just do a voice vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, thank you. Move to public hearings. I think we're going to be on this next item for a little while. Propose we take a quick break while staff is loading up the report for Ridgefield. How about, can we do a five-minute break? Thank you. I lost Director Ford. Ready? Yeah, let's go ahead. Thank you. We hear a staff report on Ridgefield events. Oh, before we get, I do need to make an ex parte disclosure. I was a guest at a wedding that was held at Ridgefield Events. And the owner was on site, introduced himself to me and did explain that he'd be coming for some modifications before the commission. But we didn't get into the details of that at that time. But I just want to make that disclosure. Nope. Turn to staff.
Just waiting for the, there we go.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Michael Kine with Humboldt Planning Department here to present an overview for PLN 2025-18885 Ridgefield Events modification. This is a modification to a conditional use permit. The project would modify the conditional use permit that allows for the property at 2242 Fickle Hill Road to be utilized for large special events, primarily weddings. This slide shows the location of the property. The property is located approximately 2.3 miles east of the base of Fickle Hill Road and Bayside Road. This next slide is the original site plan approved by the planning commission on April 4th, 2024. As you can see from the site plan, all events occur in the northwest portion of the property. The permit holder submitted a modification request application on June 12th, 2025 in order to allow for up to 14 guests to stay overnight for up to three days in the existing residence, increase the maximum number of events to 40 events per year mid-April to mid-October, and it increased the maximum number of guests to 175 guests per event. The original permit allowed, allows for a maximum of 30 events between mid-April and mid-October and a maximum of 120 guests during an event. Overnight stays were not part of the original application. Since the approval of the conditional use permit, the permit holder has developed and installed an updated septic system, which was approved by the Department of Environmental Health on March 3rd, 2025. The design of this septic system was developed for 150 people in mind. Two ADA restrooms were also built under building permit BLD 60661, which was issued in December of 2024. These restrooms removed the requirement for portable toilets and hand washing stations for the guests. The current existing residential septic tank, which is separate, is suitable for use by clients according to the Humboldt County Department of Environmental Health if guests were to stay overnight. This next slide shows the location of the new commercial septic system designed for 150 guests. And this slide just shows the location of the current residential septic system, which again is approved by the Department of Environmental Health. In addition to the original conditions of approval from the original CUP, the modification would include that the permit holder hire a septic design consultant to increase the current capacity of the recently installed septic system for 150 guests to provide for the increase of 175 to 175 guests. And also secondary, the permit holder shall submit monitoring reports regarding noise level and attendance after the event season ends in October each year. A good neighbor letter was sent by... A good neighbor letter was sent by the permit holder to neighboring property owners on March 19, 2025, explaining his intentions to modify the permit. A notice order for public comment was sent August 7, 2025, by Humboldt County Planning regarding the modification. The primary concerns raised from the public comment responses were water usage and impact to neighboring wells, the potential for water contamination, increased traffic, noise predominantly for residents to the west and to the south of the property, alcohol consumption and travel primarily on Fickle Hill Road, and the reduction of property value surrounding the event location. Eighteen letters and emails were received by the planning department opposing the modification, and one letter or email was received in favor. The letter that was in favor was provided by the permit holder in response to the good neighbor letter sent in March. Staff recommendations: Make all required findings for the approval of Ridgefield Events modification and adopt the resolution approving the Ridgefield Events modification subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Planning staff makes this recommendation based on the notion that no complaints had been received by the Planning and Building Department prior to public notices being sent August 7. The one exception was an email sent from a local resident regarding the Ridgefield Events website that was advertising for expanded capacity of 150 guests, which was not approved by for the conditional use permit, and that lodging was available. There has there has been no evidence to show that the permit holder has allowed lodging onsite or had more than 120 guests at any one event, not including staff or vendors. Moreover, Humboldt County Public Works Land Use approved the modification with no further conditions required, and the Department of Environmental Health also gave approval for the modification once the updated condition has been met. That being said, the Planning Commission must find that the modification would not be detrimental to the public's health, safety, and welfare in order to approve. The Planning Commission should consider all the evidence in making their decision. Within the last several weeks, a significant number of public objections have been submitted in writing and several phone calls have been received by the department opposing the modification. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions to staff this time? Commissioner Kurayazi?
Maybe just requesting staff to repeat that this is, you know, within the the zoning classification, it's a lot, this is an allowed use of this area, even though there are residents around them, residents know that they exist, their their properties exist within a zone where this use is allowed.
Other questions? Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing on this item. I'll remind you of the time limits and open with the applicant. And you have up to 10 minutes. And I understand you may have a PowerPoint presentation or something, or did you want to just go from the?
Yeah, I think Cliff is maybe going to be able to pull that up.
Okay.
I also gave you some of these printed materials in the the folders that we give couples when they come for tours. We get tours from people from across the country and bookings from across the country. We use these folders to highlight other businesses, local state parks, and other things that people may be interested in doing while they're here visiting us. Do you have that? Is it possible to start the timer once my presentation comes up? Thank you.
Okay.
Shall I wait for the timer to reset?
You're ready.
Okay. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to bring my project before you this evening. Excited about our business. I've already written to you about our team, our economic impacts, and and some of the other factors, so I'm going to focus this evening on operations and compliance at Ridgefield. And as you can see from this first slide, Ridgefield is a very naturally secluded location for events. Could move to the next slide, please. I care deeply for this property, for my neighborhood, and my community that I've lived in now for 36 years. Caring is really at the heart of what we do at Ridgefield. We care for some of the most tender and intimate moments of our couples and our guests' lives. It's something that brings us a lot of joy. I have brought that same spirit of caring to ensuring that Ridgefield is in full compliance with county codes and the conditions of approval that you gave us last April, 16 months ago, when you granted our CUP. You made clear that your main areas of concern were traffic and noise. We've done everything that you've asked and more. From my perspective, there are two main questions this evening. The first being, how well have we complied with our initial conditionals of approval? And second, how will the proposed modifications affect that compliance moving forward? I'd like to walk you through some of the information I've provided so you can understand the steps that we take to mitigate for both traffic and noise impacts. If you could go to the next slide. Traffic safety breaks down into two comments components for us, arrival and departure. And at the entrance to Ridgefield, which you can see on our left, on your left, when guests arrive, they will see a sign with the couple's name, a Ridgefield sign, a flag for extra visibility, and the first person of a three- or four-person parking team with a radio out at the road, making sure that no one can miss the turn to our event space, and that if there's any mobility or handicap needs, they can radio ahead to me. I carry a radio for my event staff. Twelve people are on that radio system, and I have a separate radio for my parking team. Once guests make the turn and come into the venue, the first piece of person they see is me there, wearing my fancy orange vest and all of my equipment, including sound monitoring equipment. And I, along with my wife, work every single event to ensure that we're in compliance and that our staff is keeping to the guidelines that we've set. So I get to greet everyone personally and help manage that flow of traffic. Okay. Departure is simpler for us because people have already gotten to us and are just sort of dribbling out at a slower rate. Our main concern here is always guest safety with relation to alcohol consumption. Alcohol consumption is consumption is something we pay a lot of attention to, obviously, as guest safety is is paramount for us. Our approach to safety with guests leaving Ridgefield starts with our policies and guidelines long before the event making clear how we operate. Our bartenders all go through a training program to be able to understand what safe service looks like. We close our bar a minimum of 60 to 90 minutes before guest departure time, and we have close relationships, excuse me, with cab, ride share, and shuttle services. And lastly, we always encourage and have a sign at our bar encouraging people to leave their vehicle at Ridgefield if they feel like they need a safe ride. We allow them to park safely overnight and come the next day to retrieve their vehicle. The biggest potential impact, certainly, in our neighborhood is noise, which is why I've spent so much time addressing noise impacts and accurately recording noise production. I've really made it something of a personal mission to be proactive and exceed your commission's recommendations when it comes to noise. My sound management approach started last year before my initial CUP hearing, when I hired Salter, which is an acoustical engineering firm in San Francisco, to do sound analysis so that I could understand how the levels of sound are being generated at Ridgefield and at what rate and how fast they drop off to my neighbors' properties. You can see a copy of that Salter Acoustical Engineering Report, and you, when granting us our CUP, your commission decided that if we got two noise complaints within six months, we would have to then begin decibel testing at our boundaries with a threshold of no more than 80 decibels. My approach has been to be proactive and incorporate regular decibel testing from the get-go. I've kept a log of three different locations, actually, sorry, could you go to the next slide? From the beginning. So you can see an excerpt from the Salter report dated April 1, 2024. You can see in the top right, level of decibel reduction at 1,200 feet is a 42-decibel drop. And then you can see what the noise level is, either from traffic or, more importantly, amplified music at addresses around our venue. I record these decibel levels at three locations on our property, and Salter stressed that noise is subjective. It's a subjective experience. And so it's really critical to log decibel levels accurately to have an objective data set for monitoring compliance. Skip ahead now. You can see from the report that our time limit ends before the county's sound ordinance would require, and you can see that the the report concludes that basically the sound levels at our neighbors' homes are in the decibel range of, quote, "a suburban area at night." If you go to the next slide, please. So you can see the, you set 80 decibels for us, which is basically the volume of a telephone dial tone, and we're operating between a telephone dial tone and often closer to that of a household refrigerator. You can see the locations in the bottom right where I do testing around the venue. You can see photos of the decibel meter at all the locations where I do testing, and you can see the recordings for all of the events we've done this year, all of which are below that 80-decibel threshold. The information and data I've shared with you on sound makes clear independently and objectively that we are and have always been, from the beginning, 100% in compliance with the conditions you set for us. The second question really is, how will the proposed modifications affect the compliance levels? Our request for an increase to 175 guests would really have very little meaningful impact on noise or traffic flow. Noise is associated with amplified music, not from guests standing around, talking, and being heard 1,200 feet away. In your folder, you have a list of event dates thus far for our 2025 season and the number of guests. Our average guest count for this year is 74 guests per event. Our request to increase to 40 possible events a year is a little bit layered in that we're looking not to increase the number of amplified events at all, but to add more elopements and micro weddings, which are more affordable, happen midweek, have very few people, and no amplified music. But the core of this whole modification proposal, the reason that we brought this before you, is really about the weekend retreat concept, where couples can stay with us from Friday to Sunday. The net effect of this is going to be a reduction in the amount of guests that come to our property of 250 people, reduction of 250 people over the course of any weekend. A full season of weekend packages might only be 20 or 25 events, because obviously there's less weekends in that timeframe than there are individual weekend days. If I were a neighbor who was concerned about traffic and noise, I honestly would be first in line recommending this approval because it will absolutely reduce noise and traffic impacts on our neighborhood. That's why we figure this is a win-win-win for Ridgefield, the county, and our neighborhood as it speaks directly to our neighbors' concerns. Everything I've shared with you this evening paints a picture of compliance and care. Don't just take my word for it. When we wrote to our neighbors announcing our project, letting them know ahead of time, giving them my cell phone number so they could reach out if they had any questions, the only neighbors who responded were unanimous in support. They said things like, "We're pleased with your care. We have no issues with what you're proposing. That was a really nice letter to your neighbors," or, "We appreciate your respect and consideration for the neighborhood, and your music is very faint, hardly discernible, and absolutely not disruptive." We did actually receive four positive emails from that first outreach. These comments align with the report from Salter. They align with our decibel data, and they align with our business practices. We also have numerous five-star reviews. We've never got anything but. I appreciate your time and look forward to answering any questions.
Thank you. After we hear the rest of public comment, I'll allow you three minutes at the end to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission on this matter? Please approach the podium. In the interest of time to just please line up behind the speaker at the podium if you want to speak. Somebody has to go first. Thank you.
Sorry.
No worries. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. I am a neighbor, Phyllis Geller. I'm one of the residents on Inga Road. My properties are approximately 685 feet from the area I consider the venue, which is sort of the clearing in front of the home or mans. And my my problem is basically the noise. And I think the sound carries very well across the hills and valleys in the Fickle Hill area. I can hear the cows down on the bottom. I can hear noise from the freeway, plenty of fireworks, legal and illegal. I can hear gunfire, chainsaws, the normal lot, the sounds you expect to hear in a rural neighborhood, pleasant or unpleasant. I've lived there 42 years. I'm used to it. There's there's a couple of parcels to the east of my property. They are predominantly filled with some trees at their borders. And I tell you, the sound comes across, even though it's not as loud as it was a year ago and beyond. But presently, it is audible. My house doesn't shake like it did, and I I thank Scott for taking care of a majority of the noise. But the past couple of weeks, there have been a couple of events that have been louder than they had been before. DJs or master of ceremonies, whooping, hollering, music, all that. But I do want to let him know that I appreciate all the work he did do. We on Inga Road may or may not have been considered. We did not receive any sort of communication from him. It seems he's predominantly concerned with people to the south and east and not as much to the west. We have not heard from him, and I don't have his phone number. I went to call. I went to the website. I couldn't find the information. And I thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you.
I got about eight minutes worth, so I'm going to go ahead and start, and then people are going to follow. Hello, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lorian Sanchez, and my husband and I own a property adjacent to Ridgefield Events. In fact, our house near the road is, when you saw the initial picture that Scott was presenting, it's right by the road, and you could see our house just behind the flagger. Okay. When this wedding venue was initially proposed, the applicant presented their plan as opening their home to small elopement events with up to 20 attendees, sprinkled with larger weddings capped at 120 attendees. Doing a little math, with proposed 30 events per season, per season, the majority being elopements, my husband and I thought, okay, say one event per week. my husband and I thought, okay, say one event per week with maybe five being big weddings and the other twenty-five being elopements. We can live with that. This was their dream, their property is beautiful, and they enjoy hosting, they're great hosts. We wanted to support this, and we provided a letter of support. Now that the venue has been in operation, I wish I could take back our letter of support, but in truth, I couldn't have predicted where this would lead and how fast. The impact of the neighborhood is far greater than what we could have ever have imagined. I feel like I fell, fell for a bait and switch. Ridgewood Events advertises as a large wedding event business, touting itself as a destination wedding venue, targeting clientele by comparing themselves to other large wedding venues up and down the California coast. This is not how the venue was presented in the initial CUP. There's a huge financial opportunity for the owners, but it's completely at the cost of the neighboring properties' peace and decreasing land value. This whole scenario is heartbreaking. I've known Scott and Krista for a long time, and I've been afraid to make waves, but I have to speak my truth. They are downplaying and not acknowledging what some of the neighbors and I are experiencing. Back in early two thousand and twenty-four, the operations plan for Ridgefield Events stamped and dated as received by the Humboldt County Plan, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, described the proposed wedding venue as, "Our venue will only be open from mid-April to mid-October as we are operating as an outdoor venue. My wife and I will run the business, there will be no employees, no employees. Our goal over the next three years is to grow to thirty combined annual events with a majority being elopements, which are smaller and lower impact events. Therefore, we anticipate, anticipate operating for less than ten percent of the year." My husband and I bought our Fickle Hill property in two thousand because the back of the property is a magnificent small meadow surrounded by redwoods. We want to build on the back of the property, we wanted to, but in two thousand and seven, we had a family emergency that forced us to move down into Arcata, and I pass.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, we, we kept the Fickle Hill property at this time, and we, and this year, we finally can fulfill our dream. We have begun fixing up the house in the front of the property so that we can rent it out. We, we plan to build a home for our retirement in the back of the property. Since April, I've been up to my property a lot. During my time there, I've observed microphones, DJs, and amplified music with the low bass heard in the back of the property. Vehicles constantly come and go before and during the event. There have been weddings and single, uh, uh, there have been multiple weddings on single weekends that disrupt the serenity of the neighborhood and extend periods of time, for extended periods of time, leaving neighbors with a quiet, leaving neighbors without a quiet weekend or Sunday night. Vehicles show up in the mornings and leave late in, in the night with evenings punctuated with DJ music and a little roar of party or celebrating. One evening, I sat in the back of the property during an event listening to a DJ and amplified music and just cried for what had been lost. I knew property would not, I knew the property would not be the same. Now I just, now I'm just working towards ensuring Ridgefield Events follows the current CUP and minimizes harms to the neighborhood. The existing permit is already burdening the neighbors, and approving this modification will just make it worse. Allowing fourteen guests at night will allow for the party to go all night. These are not small intimate weddings, these operations have outgrown location, and the events are disruptive in a residential setting. Anything that takes away from the peace and quiet is lowering the value of the surrounding properties. In our case, our house is close to the road with a driveway adjacent to Ridgefield Events. Driveways, see page eleven of Attachment Six, Public Comments. And one can hear festivities in the back of the property, which is the most beautiful and tranquil portion of our property. I'm just now seeing their operation and the end goal of the website. The applicants are not satisfied with what is reasonable operation within our neighborhood. The initial operation plan for Ridgefield Events stated a goal over the next three years to grow to a combined thirty annual events to them, with the majority being elopements, which are smaller and lower impact events. The website advertised in their quest to expand doesn't agree with what was initially proposed. The speed with which they are pushing things through doesn't provide the neighborhood with time to understand or reconcile with the last couple of months where the events were disruptive. The applicant is no longer living on, on premises and can, and I can see why. It is a party zone, not a home. The reasons that the projects need a C, the reason that the project needs a CUP is because of the non-compatible land use and may be disruptive to the neighborhood. Even with all the good intentions of trying to make it compatible with the neighborhood, the venue is not compatible at all due to the incompatible origin, permit should be revoked.
Thank you.
And I'm Tracy, these are Lorian's words, I'm just reading them so her concerns can be heard. The existing permit should be revoked due to the applicant not complying with the current conditions of approval. Please refer to Attachment Six, Public Comment, pages six through nine, that shows a clear pattern of advertising contrary to the current CUP. The applicants are currently advertising that their venue, that their venue as if the modification has already been approved, which is false and misleading to the public. Their jumping the gun is part of an ongoing effort of the owners to do what they want regardless of how it impacts the neighbors. I implore the planning, planning commission to recognize this as an incompatible land use. Do not approve the modification as proposed. Instead, the permit should be revoked, or at minimum, the permit should be modified as follows. Number one, no use of microphones, no amplified music, only acoustic string music allowed, and limited to the hours of one P M. to eight P M. Number two, maximum of two events per week with no more than one event per day. Three, hours of operation, nine-thirty A M. to eight-thirty P M., including setup and teardown. Number four, guests, one P M. to eight P M. Five, maximum guests, one hundred and twenty. There are many other people catering and setting up and taking down for events, and that adds up to a lot on top of the wedding party. Number six, up to thirty events per season, mid-April to mid-October, with a maximum of five big events, thirty to one hundred and twenty guests, and twenty-five smaller events, two to twenty guests. Number seven, traffic study of Ridgefield driveways ingress egress for a calendar year to quantify increase in traffic. And number eight, a calendar of events showing when, what type, and what size. Finally, number nine, website clearly states the terms of the CUP and does not imply by omission or leave room for misinterpretation.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm gonna try to skip through some of this and avoid repeating. My name's Dave White, and I live on the Fickle Hill area, actually off of Inga Road. My houses or my property is six hundred feet away from Ridgefield. I built my own house forty years ago, we've lived there since, and we wanted to just enjoy the peace and quiet of the redwoods and the beautiful scenery, which Ridgefield definitely does qualify for a very beautiful sight. I am opposed to the permit modification primarily due to noise, although I do have concern about the impact to the water table and also road safety. Regardless of what the various properties are zoned, whether they be TPZ or Ag, it's a residential area. And Ridgefield is a commercial enterprise that generates traffic, it generates noise, and it's in the middle of a residential area. As has been mentioned, some of the events have been very loud with music. When you can sit at your home six hundred feet away and understand everything the DJ is saying, the sound is too loud. One thing, too, the, he talked about a good neighbor letter, I never saw it. As was mentioned earlier, I don't know who it went to, but it didn't go to, to any of us down on Inga. Last year, an eighty-decibel limit was put in place, it's not, it's not working. Either he is not abiding by it, and I know he showed pictures of his sound monitoring, but is that when it's really loud, you know, is it the appropriate location, I don't know. The noise study he had done is flawed. He, the, I'm just gonna use one example, the noise study shows my house being nine hundred feet away, when in fact, using the county GIS map and the measuring tool, it's six hundred and five feet. So all the conclusions in that noise, or at least that conclusion in the noise study does not work, I don't know about the rest of them. One of the things that kind of comes to mind, and while it may not be exactly, is similar to a short-term rental. And I know the county has spent countless months working on short-term rental regulations. To me, if he's renting it out for the weekend for people to stay there for their wedding, that's a short-term rental, regardless of the strict legal definition. One of the requirements on this, the short-term rentals is a sixty-five decibel limit daytime and sixty at night. So please consider the neighbors' feelings and the inconvenience we're having to put up with, and deny this modification and actually modify the original permit to reduce sound levels. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Stumpf, and my wife and I live at twenty-three hundred Fickle Hill Road and own and lease property at twenty-three forty Fickle Hill Road. Both residential parcels are adjacent to the Ridgefield Events property along its southern boundary. We've been on the hill since nineteen eighty-two, are now retired, and spend nearly all of our time on our property. Enchanting, majestic, magical, private, one-of-a-kind, serene. Those are the words we would use to describe how we felt in nineteen eighty-two when we originally saw the twelve-acre parcel, parcel we bought. Bought it at full asking price, built our home in nineteen eighty-seven, and then began living our dream. We've been told by many that our property is positively unique. Ironically, those same words are currently used on Ridgefield Events' website to describe and market their wedding venue. They say there is nothing quite like it in Humboldt County. We used to be able to say the same about our property, but now we must say it in the past tense. There was nothing quite like it in Humboldt County. They market the very attributes that drew us to the area forty-three years ago, but in their commercial endeavor to fulfill their financial dream, they are now compromising our present and future opportunities to continue to experience that quiet, peaceful, serene, and relaxing environment we used to have. We originally supported the conditional use permit, but after this summer's experiences, we are both a hundred percent against it. The venue's second season started in April, two thousand and twenty-five. On several occasions, when in our garden located one-quarter of a mile away, I have experienced extremely loud noise pollution that destroyed my peace of mind, forced me to go inside, and was detrimental to my mental well-being. In August, I finally ran out of tolerance of the disturbances and emailed a noise complaint to Scott Davies, which I then forwarded to the county planning department. The values of our parcels are now most certainly damaged, as according to the California real estate law, we must now list noise pollution as a known defect of our properties on all present and future real estate contracts and associated documents regarding our properties. Additional concerns about the detrimental effects of this modification include the increased risk of starting a catastrophic forest fire, the increased potential depletion of the local water table, and the increased potential for impaired driver accidents as guests travel down this hazardous road after the consumption of alcohol. Fickle Hill is a county road maintained by the Highway Patrol. When I talked to the Arcata CHP officer about this modification and possible under-the-influence incidents, I asked him how often CHP patrolled the road, and he responded, "Not often enough." To paraphrase him, he said that no reasonable person should consider increasing the number of potentially under-the-influence drivers late at night on a hazardous, poorly-maintained road like Fickle Hill Road. We ask the planning commission, be reasonable people when considering this modification, and please do not approve this modification. Now, I would like to say one further thing, my wife is here, she's terrified of speaking. Can I use her three minutes to respond to some of Scott's material?
No, I can't have you do that, she's welcome to speak, and we're really nice people.
Well, it's, it's, it's the response to claims that were made in his presentation that are not true. Like, like everything is a hundred and fifty guests to be expanded to a hundred and seventy-five guests, we're septic.
We've read your letter and all your comments.
I hadn't heard that they were gonna expand it, but it needs to be people, not guests. What about all the employees on the septic system?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Davies, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Excuse me, before we go, before you, I just want to make sure there are any, are there any hands up on Zoom?
I don't see any, but you haven't announced it yet.
Uh, I see one now, so let me, let me take the online comments first, okay?
Sure.
So.
Should I sit down?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yep, and we'll take those. So I at least see two hands, I don't know which one was up first, but one of them is unmuted, so. I can't read the name.
Abzala.
Andrew Abzala.
Abzala, thank you.
Hi, let's see, I spoke in front of you last April in, to object to the, the cuff as presented then, and I'm, I'm speaking again today in opposition to the modification and supporting my neighbors and requesting that, that there be some sort of modification to it, perhaps a lowering of the decibel limit, perhaps a restriction on the number of large events. I certainly appreciate Scott's diligence in taking the measurements, putting in the time for the study, but it appears obvious from the number of public comments you've received and their tone that it is not, it is not working out for the neighbors. And so again, I'm just speaking in support of them, I agree that there are also concerns about water and traffic. My primary concern is the noise, but yes, I just wanted to make my voice heard, so I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. And I see Michelle Growth, Press.
To be clear, I'm Andy's spouse, and, and as many of our neighbors have already fixed, there's all kinds of good information presented about some of the things that I think have already occurred, noise, and certainly, we, like many other people, chose the, to buy a house in that area because of the things that now are no longer a part of, you know, serenity and the quiet nature of the place are not really what they were. I feel terrible for my neighbors who've lived there for many years. We are new homeowners of that area, but we were concerned about it from the beginning and are deeply concerned to hear that our neighbors are being, being affected by it negatively and are wanting to try to halt the increase and capacity that will, I think, further compromise all of our ability to enjoy our homes in the area.
Thank you. Before I return the podium back to the applicant, is there anybody that hasn't spoken that would like to address the commission, either in the room or online? Okay, Mr. Davies.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity to respond. I'll try and go quickly through this, one of the, Phyllis, well first, first I want to say, I'm grateful to live in a neighborhood where everyone cares as much as they do. It means a lot to me, it means a lot to my wife, I really appreciate people commenting. I appreciate the opportunity to hear what people are concerned about. I certainly wish I'd heard it more than five days ago. We have done thirty-seven events in the last year and a half and have not heard one word from anyone that spoke here this evening. I have a ton of respect for the neighbors that live in my neighborhood. To be clear, what I find a little less compelling are neighbors like the last two speakers online that live in San Francisco and do not live in Humboldt County, let alone in our neighborhood. Lorian and Tony have not lived on Fickle Hill for fifteen years, so I'm not sure what their concerns are, but they're definitely not impacted the way that they're talking about because they don't live in our neighborhood. Phyllis brought up the busy soundscape, which I think is important to think about when you think about Ridgefield. We're not in a quiet.
Please respect the speaker, he respected you, we heard your comments. No, do not interrupt, thank you.
It's a busy soundscape that we're in, and there's a lot of noise around Ridgefield that's louder than Ridgefield, including logging trucks that run twelve hours a day up and down the hill, crabs games, events at Cal Poly, airplanes, we're all right under the final. the final approach to the airport. There's a lot of sounds that are at much higher decibel than Ridgefield. I'm not sure why I'm meant to be chagrined in any way about bringing money into Humboldt County from outside of the state or county. I mean, this is the kind of thing that we need in Humboldt County. I'm proud of what we're doing. It's sustainable, it's not resource-based, and we're operating, as I've demonstrated, well within the guidelines that your commission set for us. I'm definitely not going to apologize for being able to hire team members and support small local businesses in my neighborhood. Super proud of that. I spoke with the county before doing any advertising on our website about our weekend packages because in the wedding industry, bookings happen 16 to 20 months out in advance. I said to them, "I understand I'm going before the planning commission, but I need to launch my advertising now." So there's nothing underhanded. We had conversations with staff to clear that ahead of time. People are, we are almost, we're booking into 2027 right now, so the timelines are very long in the wedding industry. We protected the water system on our property by gifting a conservation easement to the city of Arcata at no compensation to us to protect our water system. I feel like I was cut off, and I'd like to just make a couple of quick points. We're absolutely, absolutely not doing short-term rentals. We have to be able to do venue tours. We have people that come from across the state and country. I'm not, I made explicitly clear, I'm not interested in a short-term rental operation. It's only for guests. The main thing here, and I feel like we can tie together everyone's concerns, I'm asking for the opportunity to host less people. Instead of a weekend in which I could have 120 guests on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I'm asking for a modification that would allow us to just have a wedding on Saturday. Guests from out of the area, from across the country, will pay to stay for the weekend, have an opportunity to do more in our area, and we would only have one instead of three events. I don't quite see why that hasn't sort of connected, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just stay for some questions, please. Commissioner Mulder.
So through the chair, this note that you got, the decibel readings. The only thing that I see missing on this is timeline, like timestamps, and I understand this is probably, I'm assuming it's field notes, like you're out there with your logbook and walking around to the different points. Is that correct? And then if so, do you have a basic timeline because we heard complaints of noise?
Yeah, that's a great question. When I was talking with Salter Engineering a year and a half ago, they not only, you know, talked about the subjective component of the way people, different people experience noise, but also steered us to the right equipment, professional-grade equipment that has the opportunity to test decibels in DBA as well as DBC, and the proper protocol that they use that's accepted in, you know, this kind of a situation where we do, I do multi-minute readings and then record the peak. I always usually take a photo of that as well. I didn't want to bring in 150 photos, that's why I just shared a few. But the protocols that I use for decibel testing at all my property boundaries were designed by Salter as well as the equipment that I use.
Okay, thank you. And then can I do a piggyback there? So I did, you did allude to that, it did look like in your presentation that you did a timestamp, so that way the picture gives you a timestamp. And then the last part is I just want to clarify, if I heard your testimony correctly, that you are the one that's taking these readings and writing this down. Is that correct?
I'm personally doing it every event, and again, I've been doing that since the beginning because I wanted to be able to ensure that we were operating within that threshold before ever getting any complaints.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Commissioner O'Neill.
Just so that I can wrap my head around a few things.
Please speak into your microphone.
So you want to go up to 175 guests, but from your own documentation, you're only averaging about 74. Do you have to turn away people that want larger events? Because it doesn't look like from your bookings that you've had so far that you're even meeting other than three times the 120. So why the need for more? That's my first question.
That's a great question, and honestly, we do turn away guests for a variety of reasons. The main reason why we turn down business is for people who want events where they can have amplified music later than 9:30. And it is just such a hard rule for us, and we were so careful about it that it's a place where we provide them with other locations that don't have the same sound ordinances. So we do that. As far as larger events, we do.
The question was, if you're only averaging 74, why do you need 175?
We, that's a good question. We do sometimes turn down larger events. Honestly, you know, like hearing the concerns of my neighbors, I would be willing to reduce that 175 number down to 150, which is what the voluntary ADA restroom upgrade that we did is rated for. And I would also be willing to say, I'm not sure why this is confusing, expanding to 40 events would not change at all the number of amplified events we have. That still would not be more than 30, and I'm happy to have that written as a condition of approval.
That was my other question I didn't understand because you made the comment that you would be reducing the number of guests, but the number of events would be going up?
So some of this is, I'm having to project because I don't know what bookings are going to be like, but I'm trying to make sure that we operate in such a way that is successful for our business, but also within the county's concerns. So there's two pieces here. By adding 10 events, I'm not adding any more amplified events, which is to say a full-day wedding with catering and DJ, et cetera. These would only be what we call either micro weddings or elopements. These are 20 people or less, sometimes only five people. It lasts two hours, there's no amplified music, and I'm sure my neighbors have no idea that they're even happening because it's smaller than a dinner party happening at our place. Those are the events that I'm talking about adding.
But that's what you're saying, but what they're saying is that you said one thing and now something else has happened. So I don't know if that's something that could be put into the permit, that those addition are limited to what he just said. And the third question I had was, how many on average staff are at each event?
If you mean staff that are at the event while.
That are using the restrooms and, you know.
Probably 15 on average over the course of the whole weekend. A lot more people touch the wedding from all of the vendors that work the event but are not impacting our septic or water system, from our floral team to the event, local event companies that are doing drop-offs before the event and then picking up afterward. There's a lot of businesses, catering which is done off-site. There's a lot of work that happens to support events at Ridgefield that doesn't happen on-site. The one piece that I wanted to sort of give you a little more clarity on that you brought up, which was this question of guest total, the thing that I really want to underline for the commission, and the main reason we came before you with this modification request is to allow us to do weekend packages. We only have so many weekends between May and October. And so we have already seen, the reason why we're doing this is because we were missing bookings for these kind of events from couples that said, "We would book with you, but you don't have a place for our immediate family or wedding party to stay on-site." So we decided to create that package, and that's what this modification is about. There's a huge amount of interest for this, and the reason why I think that my neighbors should be excited about this is because it reduces, as I said earlier, the number of guests that would be on-site in any given weekend by 250 guests. So it's, I don't see why there's opposition to that idea from the neighborhood because it speaks to their concerns. It allows us to grow the business and reduce the amount of people that we're hosting at the same time.
I have one question of staff. It was brought up that if there were overnight guests, would that fall under short-term rental?
Well, we don't believe that it would because they would not be renting to the general public. So if their guests are limited to the people that are associated with the special event, it doesn't, it would not be a short-term rental.
So would they be under the, we had a lot of, you can't have noise after a certain hour and all that, that was in the short-term rental. Would that also apply here?
It wouldn't, it would not apply, however, those could be added as conditions of approval.
Because we had like, you can't have noise after whatever, 10 o'clock or whatever the time limit was.
With guests overnight, our sound time at 9:30 would not change. I made that clear. So all guests would be off-site, just like in a normal wedding.
No, I'm talking about the people they're spending overnight.
Right, the 12 or 14 guests max. Right. But that would have to be in the house and under, you know, a totally controlled environment. It wouldn't be outside, there wouldn't be a DJ, there would be nothing like that.
It's hard to control some people, but that was just a question of staff, if that was appropriate.
I think, I think the answer was, we could set conditions on that if we were inclined. Other questions of the applicant? I had a couple. The noise study that you commissioned recommended some best practices, some suggestions to help mitigate some of the noise impact. Have you implemented all of those?
Everything that they suggested, we've done. We face our speakers away, everything in the report. Part of, there was, there was a, yes, the short answer is yes.
And then with the onsite stays, you're potentially reducing the amplified events by two-thirds on any given weekend.
Correct.
So could we reduce the, could we condition the number of amplified events to be reduced?
Well.
Question to staff, but it would have to be something that you would be willing to accept.
You know, I'm currently permitted for 30 events that would be amplified. What I'm saying is I don't want and nor am I asking to increase the number of events that would be amplified, and.
I know. What I'm saying is you're asking for overnight guests.
Right.
So I'm asking for a reduction in the number of amplified events, less than 30.
Assuming that that means that I'm getting the opportunity to do weekend stays, I imagine that it will be a combination of those.
I would imagine that, too.
And it's difficult for me to say, you know, what that mix is going to be. Again, I feel like we were given conditionals of approval by your commission. We've stayed within them from the start. We're looking to reduce that and make our impacts go down, and I'm just not sure what else I can do to satisfy the commission, but I'm open and I'm willing to put a limit that any expansion in a number of events would have to be for unamplified, smaller events. And again, the weekend package inherently does that as well.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public, you have a question? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you very much, and thank you to everybody that took the time to write letters and comment. Back to the commission, questions of staff.
Based on what all you heard and what the applicant was willing to concede, is there any recommendations? Sorry. Is there recommendations that you now would like to make to change it from what you previously were supporting?
I mean, certainly there have been discussions, the applicant agreed to reduce the maximum number of guests to 150. There obviously was, just brought up by Commissioner Scavdall, the idea of reducing the number of amplified events. That wouldn't necessarily need to affect the total number of events. It's a little bit of a mixed bag because it would be, in an event, then you like this, it's hard to know what the demand is going to be. So sometimes based upon a certain premise, you could condition a permit to operate under that premise, but maybe that's not where the demand is, and then so you limit the venue's ability to operate. I don't know that I would go there at this point.
Okay, Commissioner Care, Ozzy.
I'm curious, over this last year, have you received any actionable complaints about activities on the property that you've felt like you could respond to?
As I noted in the presentation, only one complaint came in back in April. The planner who took that in contacted the applicant, and I think he also spoke to it as well, stating the reason why his website stated 150 people versus the permitted 120 was because it was looking out into the future. That was the only one that came in. They had, did have a discussion. There was an email back and forth, and he did, the planner did request that he fix the website, and Mr. Davies had mentioned that he would do that in the email, but as of today, I did look, it still does say 150. So the web designer had not fixed it quite yet, but that was the only actionable item since this permit was approved.
One other question, just in terms of the land use code and the general plan, there's nothing in there that constrains, puts constraints on event sizes or anything like that? Those are up to each individual application to impose?
Correct, yeah. So, you know, there were some comments about the zoning allowing these sort of things. It does with the approval of a conditional use permit, and so that could always have never been approved, and it gives the decision-maker, in this case, the planning commission, the ability to add all sorts of conditions that they feel are necessary to make that use compatible.
Commissioner Mulder.
A couple of questions to the chair to staff. One is, I heard testimony of increased accidents and along this road. Have there been any reports of accidents associated with this event happening on Fickle Hill Road?
Nothing was reported to us. As one of the speakers stated, they did reach out to CHP to do a public records request. I don't believe that came back.
Okay. And then the other thing that I did catch, that there was one testimony where someone said their home was 605 feet according to Web GIS, but 900 feet to the sound study. Is that possibility that the Web GIS is off, or just wanted to get some clarification there? Because I have seen personally that sometimes my measurements on Web GIS are a little bit off.
I, after that testimony was given, I got on Web GIS and looked at it and measured it myself. It's about 600 feet from property line to property line.
Okay.
But from house to house, it's about, it's over 900 feet.
Okay, and that's what we're trying to measure is the residence disturbance. Okay. I think that was all my questions for the time being. I would be in support of what the applicant was saying if, when we, if we do go forward with this, limiting the events to 30 amplified events because, and that seems like something the applicant was interested in. So then the testimony we received as far as noise complaints, we'd be, I feel we'd be mitigating that if the increased events weren't amplified noise events, that'd be a direct mitigation of the testimony we heard.
I just want to clarify something. He already has a permit, and we're not changing his existing permit, even though some of the public testimony was that people would like to see that happen. That would only happen if there were lots of complaints that were investigated and we were here looking at violations, which we're not. So we're only looking at whether or not we're increasing his existing permit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I want to make sure of that, so people understand that we're not going to, you know, even though you might want us to take away events or reduce numbers, that's not what's on the agenda right now. We're looking at whether or not we would increase it. I would think that the overnight visits would be to the benefit of the community if there was limitations put on it like we do on the short-term rentals in terms of how much noise after certain hours. I also agree that the sound study doesn't have times, and so that's kind of hard to judge. Usually events get louder as the night goes on, and so that's probably when you want to test them. Usually, events get louder as the night goes on, and so that's probably when you want to test them. I also agree with reducing the amplified events, the 10 extra that he's asked for. I would also maybe limit the number of 150 events per season. It doesn't look like he's even coming close to 120 right now, so, you know, maybe there's an occasional need to do a larger one. And if the community sees violations, then they know now that they have to report those. Sometimes people don't want to, you know, complain about their neighbors, but if there truly are infractions, then, then it's important that you report those. I don't know how you take into consideration staff when you look at septic, because the septic, he said, was 150. And if you have 150 guests plus 15 or more staff, does that have to factor into the number of people using that facility? Because staff use facilities too, so I don't know how that, that factors in. I don't think vendors dropping off food necessarily are, although, you know, the cooks are washing dishes and all that in, in the kitchen sometimes. But I don't know how you factor that kind of stuff into it. But I would, I would be agreeable to the overnight stays, reducing the 10 additional to unamplified, and the number of any over 120. I mean, there are three, he admits three of them are over 120 right now, but I would limit those to only a few per year if you have them at all.
Commissioner O'Neill, I do want to mention that you had talked about chefs or people doing dishes. All food prep is done off-site, and all dishes are also cleaned off-site per CUP.
Thank you for that clarification.
It's a little bit discouraging that we approved this event site, you know, a little over a year ago, with, generally in response to a lot of support from the neighborhood and the community. And in a relatively short time, that support has seemed to erode a bit. So I'm not sure how to rationalize an increase in attendance and operation in light of that without some further consideration of the impacts on the neighbors. And I share your frustration, I share the applicant's frustration of being in operation for this time and hearing about the complaints, you know, only because of a notice or announcement for this change in use. And so it hasn't really been given an opportunity to, you know, try to understand what's going on or mitigate those, those complaints. And I was looking for some sort of, of a way to support the use. I get the idea of the overnight stays, allowing perhaps a different type of use of the facility, a longer stay, eliminating, you know, one of the concerns that we heard from people is, you know, no, you know, no, no respite from the noise all weekend. If we weren't having events on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but perhaps we're having, you know, a rehearsal dinner or, or, or something else, you know, internal into the building, and then an event on Saturday or an event on Sunday, with guests leaving, staying, maybe again, staying the night and leaving the next day, would seem to mitigate some of that noise. So that's why I was looking for perhaps some relief to the neighborhood of, of thinking that maybe we'd have fewer amplified events in exchange for allowing the overnight stays. And I don't know how to figure out those logistics either. I'm sitting here doing some scratches on a notepad, figuring out how many weekends there are between, you know, in that six-month period. And I'm trying to figure that out. So I'm faced with the, considering just simply denying the request for expansion, which leaves everything status quo, which quite frankly doesn't do a whole lot for the neighborhood complaints either. Approving this as proposed, maybe with a 150-person limit, and hoping or somehow expecting that that's gonna end up in some mitigation of, of the issues locally. But I'm not sure how that happens, so I'm looking for some help with some...
So for me, as far as the expansion of events, I feel that if we increased it to the 40, but had no ex, there was no amplified sound during those 10 events, I feel that that would not be any impact towards the complaints, or, I don't want to use the word complaints, the comments we received today. So I'm okay with that. I heard that the applicant was willing to do 150, so that would drop down the number of people on the road. So that would take care of that concern that we heard. For me, I, I would be okay with that, but I also, I would feel that, personally, I would feel, and I don't know if we could write this in, I'm gonna ask staff if the applicant's phone number would be provided to each and every person that made public comment today? So that way, they would have access. I heard one person testified that they didn't have any way to get ahold of the applicant, so hopefully that would be able to flush out some of those concerns. And is that something we can add in there as a condition, or is that kind of overstep of our...
No, that's something that you can add in there and, and require that.
Okay. So I, I, I feel that if the applicant's phone, you know, I'd be good with 150 guests, up to 40 events, the extra 10 couldn't be amplified. Applicant's phone number would be provided to each and every member that made public comment today, so that way they have access to the applicant. And then the other, the, the sticking point that I hear from other commissioners is what would be the noise rules if we granted the overnight? So through the Chair of Staff, where would those noise, like after, after 9:30, would that, the same noise as far as the event? Because it is an event, not a short-term rental.
It's, it's, if I could, through the Chair?
Yes.
One of the things that I think Commissioner O'Neill mentioned, and, and I think this is a workable solution, is that after 9:30, to incorporate the limitation set in the short-term rental ordinance for people who are staying overnight there.
Would the rest of the commission be okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I would. But I'm still stuck on the fact that we're proposing an expansion of use, another 10 events. And we've heard from the public that the existing events are creating a neighborhood nuisance. And so, and we heard from the applicant that allowing overnight stays should reduce the number of larger events that are held on the weekend. So I'm looking for actually a reduction in the number of amplified events in consideration of allowing the 150 guests, so it's larger, and allowing overnight stays. And I'm just trying to figure out what works. Is that 20 amplified events? Can I ask that question? Can I go back to the applicant on that?
You can absolutely go back to the applicant and ask that question.
You're trying to find a way to respond to complaints in a way that reduces the number of amplified events. Am I tracking you?
Yes.
Okay. So, if I, and again, tentatively, pending approval of our modification, we already have five events that are, would take weekend bookings for next season.
Okay.
That would already take 15 possible days for events and drop it down to five. We anticipate, because being able to advertise this now, we get our, when we get inquiries, the inquiries for these weekends have continued to rise in relation to single-day events. My focus is much more on being able to do these single-day events, because they make less of an impact. I would be willing to waive the 10 additional events altogether, amplified or otherwise. Keep to 30 events maximum of any kind, under the assumption that we are allowed to do weekend packages, which would then have to continue to reduce that number, commensurate to how many weekend events we do.
Right.
So 30 would be the max, and it would fall from there in correlation with every weekend event that we're able to book. I, if I can speak to the road question quickly, because I know that's come up a couple of times. We are one mile from the border of the city of Arcata. We are a 60-second drive at the speed limit on a road that takes logging trucks. It is not a huge impact to get to us from Arcata.
Thank you.
Could I ask the applicant a question just for clarity?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Davies, on the weekends that you have weekend packages, would it be possible to set some noise limits on the non-event times so that there would be some assurance that the noise would be less during those periods of time?
Absolutely. And I, I am already have those limitations written into the policies and guidelines that we have prepared for these events. Because of the success of our business, we've been able to hire staff teams. So on the day of an event, we have two full eight-hour overlapping shifts of staff onsite before guests or vendors arrive and after guests or vendors leave. And that would be the same for the weekend events. It would just naturally be smaller, because the noise impact on my neighbors is not from people having conversations or chatting on our terrace garden, it's from the amplified music. And so, and, and I know that by using the decibel meter, I can tell. So, the weekend packages, I'm fine with reduced noise maximums outside of amplified music on the Saturday.
Will you, will you agree on the weekend packages to one day of amplified events?
That's absolutely. So for a weekend package, it would be a rehearsal on Friday afternoon. First it would be check-in, then it would be a rehearsal, then we would do a plated rehearsal dinner inside the house. That's it for Friday. Saturday would be a wedding, just like any other potential Saturday. Sunday would be a departure brunch in the morning, and guests are out by lunch. So there's, there's no space or planning for amplified anything on the Friday or the Sunday. So I'm totally fine with that. That would be naturally restricted to a Saturday wedding. Think of a normal Saturday wedding with a Friday dinner and a Sunday brunch bolted on to either end of it. But it, what it does is, it allows guests to stay longer in our area and visit with each other more than flying in, being onsite for a wedding, it's hectic, there's a ton of people, and then they're gone. And so, that's really the driver for this.
Thank you. This is getting complicated, I know, to condition and monitor and all of that, but you get where we're kind of headed?
I think we understand where you're headed, and I don't think it's too complicated. Actually, it's, it's staying more simple than I was fearing in my head.
Okay.
So...
Commissioner Kierozzi?
I think, just, I, I think it's still a little complicated in my head, because there's nothing in here that the applicant continues doing single-day events with this modification. So they could still, if we limit it to 30, which they've agreed they would be willing to consider, they could still do 30 events, which is what they're able to do now. And we would be increasing the number of guests. So while they say they intend to do these package, weekend package, which, which could reduce the number of amplified events, there's, I'm not hearing anything that would prevent them from continuing doing their current practice.
I, I agree. But they continue to do their current practice without coming here and asking for the expansion, so... And I think we, I think we can agree, the noise is coming from the amplified events, not the number of guests that are at the event. I'm sure there's some noise from that, but... So I was looking for a concession that it would be 150 maximum, which is less than was actually asked for. Overnight stays allowed, but with the overnight stays, only one day of amplified music on those weekends, which is, has to result in a, in a reduction in the number of amplified music days, if he's able to book those. And I think the market, one of the reasons the applicant is here, is the market is saying, "We're willing to pay more to book your venue for three days and have our guests stay there." And that seems better for the neighborhood than booking event on Saturday and, or Friday night event, wedding, a Saturday wedding, and a Sunday afternoon wedding. So it seems like a reasonable compromise that could lead, could help both sides. That's all.
Yeah, that, that'll make sense to me. I think I'm just trying to clarify that if they book these weekend events, that all makes sense. But there's an if there.
Yes.
So it could be that we get 30 single-day wedding events, and we've increased the number of participants for each one of those events. So I just wanted to clarify that. I, I still, I still think I'm leaning towards agreeing with what I'm hearing with the commission, but I want to clarify that we're not under the impression that we're actually effectively reducing the number of amplified events from what they currently have. It's just that they have the opportunity to book.
The potential is, yes. And, and, and the record also says, even though they had the ability to have up to 125 guests or whatever it is now, the reality is, not every wedding books out to the maximum capacity of the venue, right? So some events could be 150 people, but a lot of them will be smaller, probably most of them. So, anyway, thank you. I think we're starting to beat a dead horse, but...
I'm gonna make an attempt at a motion. Do you think we're there?
I think we're close.
I'm, I'm gonna make, so I'd make a motion to approve with a maximum of 30 events, up to 150 people per event for weekend pa, or weekend events. There's only one day of amplified noise. And for the overnight stays, the STR noise rules are in effect during the evening hours. And then the applicant shall provide his cell phone number to all members of the public that commented tonight. And the other legal jargon that needs to be said in there to make the motion. Yes?
So are you saying that you're gonna limit, he can only have a wedding on a Saturday or a Sunday? He can't have them on both days, if that was to happen?
No, for the weekend, if they're, if they're doing the weekend, like renting out the facility for the weekend. There's only one, there, because we did hear...
But there could be other times where he's not renting it out for the weekend.
There could be a wedding right now. There could be a wedding Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, seven days in a row.
You're not preventing that, you're just saying if he rented a...
He already can do that.
Okay.
He already can technically do that.
I was just making sure.
Okay, yes, yes.
No, we're not, we're, yeah, we're not, we're not changing that. We're only preventing that if he rents the whole venue out, the house. He can only do one amplified event at that, in that weekend. So they can't have a party, rehearsal party the night before with amplified music outside. They can't do that. They can't hang out on Sunday and have amplified music again with just the family or whatever. It has to just be one amplified event. It has to just be one amplified event.
And can I add, I think I also heard the recommendation that we apply the short-term rental noise constraints onto.
That's what I said during the evening hours, is, is what I was, what I said in my motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Didn't hear the short-term rental term, so I wanted to clarify.
I used STR, acronyms. I came from the school board where everything's turned into acronym.
Yep.
And I just carry that over here.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I'll second it.
We have a second. Any discussion on the motion, any other questions?
Yeah, I think, I think I would encourage neighbors to be, we've, I think we've heard all the neighbors. And I agree with Commissioner Scabdal around the concern of trying to reconcile those comments. And I would encourage neighbors to work on being more proactive, both with county staff as well as the applicant. And that would help with future considerations going forward.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Scabdal.
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Kurayazi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you for everybody that came. Okay, are we good to power on here or do we need a break? You okay, Commissioner Kurayazi? Okay. Empress Farms.
So through the chair, in the interest of time, we had placed this on the agenda for a public hearing in part because it is a fairly large project. And we had anticipated that there would be some public concern, particularly from some of the neighbors. We have met with the neighbor who we believed was the primary person who would have concern and I, I think addressed their concerns, which resulted in the supplemental conditions that were sent to you. So I guess I would ask if the commission wants a presentation, we could go through that or if in the interest of time, if you want to ask questions and.
Can we waive the staff report?
I was not able to look at the supplemental conditions, unfortunately, but I am willing to lean on.
Could the staff make a brief presentation, just explain what the neighborhood concerns were and the supplemental conditions? I think that would be helpful.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the public. My name is Andrew Whitney, I'm the assigned planner. Just briefly, the concern was water. And it was brought up by a neighbor. The project relies on a rainwater catchment pond to provide cultivation water for cannabis. The applicant has also applied for a conditional use permit for a manufacturing facility, non-volatile or non-flammable manufacturing and a commercial nursery. The concern centered around a spring in a well that may be connected hydrologically to other properties in the vicinity. So we, with the supplemental, have revised the conditions of approval to address that concern. Essentially, the condition A three, well, that condition essentially limits the cultivation square footage until the applicant meets criteria of expanding the rainwater catchment area, so they're able to catch enough rain to service the operation in a drought year. And in the supplemental, condition A five, one word was changed. The word was manufacturing and let me, I don't have that condition right on the top of my head. But anyway, we had conditioned the project to, condition A five. Oh, installing a water meter. So the water, the water for the cultivation comes from the rainwater catchment. The proposal doesn't include the use of the well or the spring until the manufacturing facility comes into play. The neighbor requested that we change the timeline for that metering to cultivation in 2026 rather than when they rolled out the, the manufacturing process, which could come some years later. So that was one modification. And then the, the neighbor was, in condition B fifteen, had asked us to, an earlier version of the applicant's operations plan included the, the well as a backup irrigation source. That is not included in, in the approval for this permit. Essentially, we limited their cultivation area based on, on the reasonable amount of water they could gather in a drought year. So those are the changes. We can open it to public comments, see if anyone has any questions or comments, but I think we've addressed the, the neighborhood concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions of staff? No. I will ask if the applicant wants to speak or if anybody in the public wants to address the commission on this matter. I don't see anybody.
If the applicant doesn't want to speak, I'll go ahead.
All right.
Good. This is not me, I'm sorry.
Oh, we're on Empress Farms? Yeah, yeah.
Not me, I will get to the next item.
All right, thank you.
It's past my bedtime.
It's getting past ours too, so I understand. All right, so I don't see anybody from the public or the applicant on, speaking on Empress Farms, so I will close that public hearing, bring it back to the commissioners. Any discussion or are we ready for a motion?
I'll move to accept staff recommendations on Empress Farms, L C special permits, zoning clearance certificates and conditional use permit, including the supplemental information provided.
I'll second that and thank staff for taking in public comments, mitigating the project accordingly to take care of those concerns.
Have a motion second, any questions on that? I will take a roll call vote on this. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, excuse me, I said roll call and then went voice. Voice vote. I'll do that again. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing done, motion passes. Now we'll take up Walford Zone Reclassification and General Plan Amendment in Eureka Area. Staff report, please.
Chair, just given the time.
Yes.
And there are people in the audience, I know, for things after this item.
Got it.
And I'm just wondering.
Which ones do you want to grab? Go.
Yeah, so, I mean, the order here is the Walford Zone Reclassification. I wouldn't propose to change that. We've already continued the L C I parcel map. But that leaves ALVs and also Heavenly Rooted still to get to, and it's nine twenty right now.
All right, so I don't know which items the public is here to address, so.
Well, some of them are here for Heavenly Rooted. Some of them are here for the item that you're about to, to hear. And, and so I think that Walford will take more than the twenty minutes we have left in, in the meeting. I, I, I wouldn't suggest not hearing that. I, I think we should start that, but I think in fairness, the folks who may be online for the ALVs subdivision parcel map and then also Heavenly Rooted, we may want to just continue those to attend to right now so that people can.
So they can, okay. So we need a motion to continue ALVs and.
Heavenly Rooted was pulled off consent.
Yeah, and Heavenly Rooted to the next meeting.
Would, would it be worth pinging the crowd to see who's here for what project? Is that okay?
Well, I saw, sure. How many people are here to address the commission on Walford Zone Reclassification? All right. Thank you. How many on ALVs residential subdivision? And how many on Ridge, what was it? Heavenly? That's pretty evenly split and we made people wait. We have to leave the room by nine thirty. So that's, that's the challenge that I have here. So I'm not going to get to both of those.
And the security guard thought it was nine o'clock, I heard him say it, maybe he was.
Yeah, he's going to already be.
How many times you've seen him look in there?
We've already ticked him off, so. So I apologize to those of you that sat here through this evening, but it looks like we're not going to get to the Heavenly project this evening. So you're welcome to go, I promise, and we're going to continue it or we can.
We are going to continue, right?
Yeah, we should.
Yeah, we, we are going to continue.
We should probably state the date.
Yeah, we'll continue to.
To ten, ten two.
To October second meeting, okay.
So.
Can we have a motion to do that?
So I'm going to make a motion to continue Heavenly Rooted to October second, 2025.
Seconded.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, we have another motion.
I'll move to continue ALVs to October second, is that staff's recommendation?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
The applicant for Heavenly Rooted has their hand up.
Oh. Okay, uh, can we, are they unmuted? And that's, oh, you just muted, so there you go. Mr. Weems?
Yeah, I was curious, since it's been postponed tonight till next time, when you put it on the schedule for next?
I did that, I'm so sorry.
You cut him off. I think he's going to ask if it could be early in the meeting.
It'll be old business, so right after consent.
It, it will be old business, that's correct.
So it will come right after the consent calendar on old business, the first or second item.
Okay.
Okay? And thank you, thank you for your patience.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay. That brings us to item three, Walford Zone Reclassification.
Okay, good evening, I'm going to try to be quick. I do have a presentation that goes into a few things. So this is an application for zone reclassification and a general plan amendment in the Eureka area, a little bit west of Redwood Acres and just off of Harris, shown here. This is actually showing, this next slide is showing the property in question, which is approximately eleven acres. It is one legal parcel consisting of two APNs. The majority of that parcel is undeveloped, undevelopable gulch area. And this is showing, just real quick, a street view image of the property as it is now.
Is that microphone on?
I, maybe I'm not talking into it.
That's better.
So this is just showing the, a street view image of the property right now. It's developed with a medical office building. The rezone application is to remove the Q zone that was placed on this property as part of the Eureka Community Plan. This was originally a property owned by the school district and the Eureka Community Plan placed a restriction that it could only be used for medical, dental and other health-related offices and facilities. And you can see no uses, no other uses even with a use permit. This restriction was also embedded in the general plan and so the general plan amendment would remove that text as well. So really, we're doing the same thing through the general plan amendment and the rezone, which is to eliminate the restriction that limits this to only medical offices. The R four zone does allow a much wider variety of uses, as shown here. Most people think of this as a multifamily zone and it does allow, as it says, professional and business offices. So by removing the Q zone in that general plan text amendment, this would open it up to all of these uses, which include the existing use, medical office, as well as multifamily. So the required findings for the general plan amendment has to be in the public interest, consistent with the guiding principles and consistent with goals of plan. Real quickly, a lot of those policies and goals of plan speak to the need for affordable housing and housing through all of the income levels. And it is, in the county's opinion, in the public interest to remove that Q zone to allow for the potential of the, the property to be developed with housing. There is a significant housing need in the county. Those are very similar findings in the, for approving a general plan or zoning reclassification. So, let's see here. One of the things that was done as part of this review, including the environmental review under SEQA, was to look at what the change in potential maximum development of the property would be through these, through the amendments. And under the current zone, which would allow for medical offices, it could be developed with much more than what is on the property right now. It could go up to forty-five feet in height, so presumably, let's say, four stories, a hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet of medical facility. And this is an estimate of what the number of employees, trips and vehicle miles traveled would potentially be under what is principally permitted right now in, on that property with the Q zone. So without any change, that could happen. That's essentially the baseline that we are considering for this impact analysis. By allowing this to change to potentially allow residential, you could have up to potentially a hundred and five units. And it's showing you six hundred and thirty-two trips, five thousand fifty-six vehicle miles traveled potentially. So looking at that change could potentially reduce a lot of those impacts. Now, it's important to note that by removing the Q zone, it's not saying that this is all going to be developed with residential. It just would give them that flexibility to do all residential, all medical, which is allowed now, or a combination of the two. In addition to any of the other uses that are, would be allowed in an R four zone. So we did do an initial study and mitigate negative declaration, which applies some mitigation measures, primarily dealing with special status of nesting birds, which are, there is some very good habitat in the rear of the property. And dust control and noise restrictions for when this become, when construction would happen on any redevelopment of the property, as well as mitigation measures to ensure that if they do uncover any cultural or paleontological resources, that those are handled appropriately. We circulated the SEQA document back in April and we received one comment. In response to the public notice of this hearing, we received a lot more comments and they relate primarily to traffic, the loss of open space and potential forest land. And a lot of the comments deal with the fact that right now the property is potentially being, and maybe I shouldn't say potentially, it's, it's potentially a public nuisance. There is a lot of shipping containers on the property, a lot of construction debris and equipment. And I'll show you some images of that in a minute. So there's a lot of comments that we shouldn't allow any change of use of the property until that property's cleaned up. So just real quick, talked about, you know, what the impact analysis looks at for potential traffic. We did not see this as potentially allowing an increase in traffic because again, the resident, the current zoning would allow them to massively expand that, that medical office use. There was some comments, or at least one comment, that this would be a loss of open space and that the community uses this open field. And I believe that they are probably misinformed about the property in question. The property in question is that red square, that's really the area of development that could occur on the property. Very limited open field on the property and it's actually being maintained right now in a manner that I don't think anybody would really want to go recreate on. And I think there, those commenters are referring probably to the property that's shown with the blue square, which is not this property at all and is zoned commercial. This slide is showing you. This slide is showing you the two properties, property in question is the one on the left and you can see it's not, um, it's not somewhere I would want to go walk my dog necessarily. The one on the right definitely is an open field that is attractive for that purpose. Uh, and then this is gonna show you some images of the nuisance on the property, which are unpermitted storage containers, um, construction materials, a lot of tile and marble, um, and construction equipment, just go through it real quick in just a time. And let's see, so there's the rear of the property. And just pause on this slide real quick, it's, this is really the only portion of the property that could potentially have additional development beyond where that building is. And so, uh, we did, there is actually a code enforcement, active code enforcement case on the property right now relative to those shipping containers and the construction equipment. And we are recommending that if the planning commission does recommend the board approve this zone reclassification and general plan amendment, that the board doesn't take up the action until all of the shipping containers have been removed from the property or obtained building permits. And I've got a note up there that is important, that building permits would only be permitted for those storage containers if they were in allowable and principally permitted use, which does not appear that they are right now. Outdoor, um, outdoor storage is not a allowable, um, use of the property. And many of those storage containers are also in the setbacks and so, um, most likely they would need to be removed. So that concludes my presentation. I wanted to get real quick, but.
Thank you. Commissioner Curieozzi?
To clarify to staff, um, this, this will be just removing the Q zone from this particular parcel.
That is correct, yes. So just the Q zone and just the text amendment and general plan that deals with this particular parcel.
Okay.
Commissioner Mulder?
So through the chair, staff, lots of open space. This is a private property partial, correct or incorrect?
Correct.
So that would mean that open space rights to public technically don't apply? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, it's nine twenty-five. Am I gonna open a public hearing now or am I gonna, uh?
Well, Chair, I think if you were to open the public hearing now, you would get through one or two comments.
Right.
Then you'd have to continue it open.
Right.
And I would recommend that rather than trying to hear from one person, that you continue this now.
Okay.
Probably shouldn't have started this, I apologize.
No, it's good to hear the staff report and get some context. Um, I just, uh, yeah, I apologize that we didn't get all the way through the meeting. So we had a stacked agenda tonight and, uh, people sat here for three and a half hours, so.
And you've already filled up October second, so are you gonna continue this?
Yeah, yeah, well, the items that continued appear earlier on the agenda, so, um, yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's part of our world right now, so I apologize for that.
Just to realize that there is, right next to that property is hospice.
Okay.
So you want people coming in.
Yeah, and I, I would encourage you to use this time between now and October second. If you, if you want to submit your comments in writing, that's helpful to us. We do read them all and review them. Um, and we will definitely, you know, one of the things we do make sure is that everybody that has a comment, even though it causes us to run long, everybody that has a comment will be heard. So by continuing this to the next meeting, it does make sure that we'll, we'll hear every one of your comments, okay? So.
And there will be an opportunity for written comment through October second?
Yes.
So there's like another opportunity?
Yeah, it's being, if it's being continued, the comment period is, continues, is that right?
Yes, please, if you get us all your comments like before the Wednesday, before October second, we can put those into the packet that goes out to the planning commission so that they will have them and be able to review them as early as possible.
So, thank you, and again, I apologize.
Make a motion to continue this to October second?
Have a motion.
A second?
Have a second from Commissioner O'Neill. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Report from Director Ford?
I do not have anything tonight.
Okay. Commissioners, anything tonight to discuss? Okay, and I thank those of you that made extra effort to be here tonight, thank you. Get well, travel safe. Meeting adjourned.